You've got mail.
Okay, we'll call the meeting orders, 10 o'clock. So, first on agenda will be Scott Pettis is here for discuss tax abatement.
Yes, sir.
Their attorney, Mr. Wildman is on the phone, so Nathan, if you want to go ahead, introduce yourself.
So, my name is Nathan Peters. I am the president of Scott Pett Products. We employ about 170 people between Vermillion and Park County. The tax abatements, we are going to buy the Shopko building and a few, it's kind of a little bit of a mess, but there's a few outlying properties within the Shopko piece that we're also going to purchase. And then, we're going to make it more of a warehouse distribution facility for what we need. And then also, the other abatement is for automation on our verti bagging line. We've seen pretty good growth with that within the last year or two, and it is time that we upgrade and produce more product. So, questions, comments?
Could you talk about a little bit about the investment that it's going to take to bring the Shopko building up to what you need, and also the investment maybe that you're doing in general terms?
Sure. So, the Shopko building currently is not set up for warehousing. I mean, as you guys know, it's nobody a departmental type store, so we're going to have to redo the flooring in there, which was carpet and tile, so we're going to take it back down to a smooth concrete floor. The current docks that are on the Shopko building will not work for us. They are more for, you know, removing one pallet at a time, basically, and we're going to need to drive on those with our corp trucks. We're going to have to put what I would consider real docks on there, so we can load and unload rather quickly. I would say, you know, by this time next year, we're probably going to see six to 10 trucks a day in and out of there, you know, loading and unloading. We'll unload containers in that facility. We will ship out of that facility certain customers. Some customers that have different needs or that take certain products, we will ship, we will, you know, ship out of the Shopko building much as we do the current Rockville facility. So, we got to add the docks, which is going to be a cost. We've got to do a few things on the inside. The lighting, eventually, we'll probably have to change. We'll get our NC and see what they want us to do on that. We've worked pretty well together in the past to make it a little bit more energy efficient.
Could you talk about the job? I mean, as you're looking, there are apparently higher additional people, and those numbers, could you go with those?
Sure. As we continue to grow, we need more people. This year, we're going to see about 25% growth through 2020. We plan on continuing that growth as we need. So, customer demands become more and more between the labels per box that you have to put on there. It's no longer putting a bunch of products on one pallet and shipping it out. The customer demands are getting more and more serious, especially when, like some of our customers, like an Amazon type customer, it's very, it's a very invasive process in order to ship them and have everything exactly right. So, some of those customers will be moving over to that building with the higher requirements, so it takes more to package all of those things before you send them out too. Some of the customers, it seems like it's going more that way than, more than the other way at this point. So, we will be adding jobs at that facility and at the Rockville facility.
Just, I'm going to throw a few numbers up there. Some of us, of course, went through this with the redevelopment commission, talking at this point on your SB 1 proposing 11 additional jobs. Correct?
Correct.
An investment in personal property, which was the equipment out of the current location, if I remember right, of over $1 million.
That's the current location, yes.
That's right. And then, an investment of, oh, it was 780,000 roughly in the new location in real property purchase price, the vacant building investments into that facility, correct?
Yes.
So, we're talking upwards of $2 million investment, which is quite substantial, to say the least. There's actually, for all of the members here, and correct me, Nathan, anything that I get wrong here.
Correct.
There are four abatements being proposed. The first one is a vacant building abatement, which is a special abatement for the Shopko facility itself. There is a real property abatement for that facility as well. A personal property abatement for the manufacturing improvements at the current location, and a personal property abatement for the new equipment that would be installed at the Shopko facility.
Oh, correct.
Correct. Okay. It's, we spent the better part of 45 minutes to an hour going through this redevelopment. I'm still a little bit confused, because I'm just trying to make sure that everybody at least has a broad brush overview of what we're doing here, so.
Cindy, you want to make any comments about, you've been involved in this process, about Scott Pett in general?
No, we just appreciate their partnership and working with us. When that building became vacant, of course, you know, we spent quite a bit of time trying to get some locals interested, so we were happy to see that Scott Pett and Nathan were interested and found a way to make that work, so that we didn't have that vacant property. And we look forward to future things, as Nathan talked about, that outline parcels in the front. As you know, we've been, you know, trying to get that sewer project on 41 going, so they're open to working with us on that easement. So, no, we're just happy to be working with them and that they, we brought all those opportunities to the table, I guess. And just said, hey, here's what we do have available in Park County to offer if you're interested. So, we spent quite a bit of time talking about the abatements.
Well, I have a question.
Sure.
As the assessor, we just had an appeal on that property, and we gave it 50% for vacancy. So, is there going to be another abatement on top of that for vacancy? Because through the appeal, we put a 50% influence factor on it for vacancy.
Bob, do you have any opinion on that before I answer mine?
I'm sorry, couldn't quite hear the question.
The assessor last year put a 50% deduction, is that correct?
Influence factor.
Influence factor on the Shopko facility due to being vacant. Does that come, I mean, obviously, the abatement is going to come off of the, whatever it gets assessed at. So, that, in my mind, would go back up with that factor coming off, and then the abatement would apply to the number, is that correct?
That would be my assumption, that now, now that there's been a change of ownership, the transfer, my assumption is that they'll be reassessed, and could be reassessed in as a, as an operating facility as opposed to a vacant building. The vacant building deduction we've applied for is allowed because it's been a vacant building for at least a year, and we're putting it back in function, I guess you could say. And so, you know, I think, I assume that you're correct, that that whole reduction because of the vacant within go away because of what we're doing here.
That's how I think I would apply as well.
Okay. So, do I have any questions you want to ask, either Nathan or Mr. Wildman, or?
This is a two-step process. We have some resolutions to adopt today, and then there'll be a second public meeting in December, a regular council meeting, where we would finalize the process. In order to accomplish this, there's two things that we will do, I think, today. Cindy, correct me when I mess this up. That we will, first of all, approve the abatement calculation agreements for all four of these. They are all set up at this point as 10-year abatements at a 10% reduction every year. So, you'll start the first year at 100%, down to 90, 80, 70, 60, 50, on down the list. This includes the clawback agreements that the redevelopment commission, the county council, agreed to several years ago, that if they don't meet the requirements that they set out, and we all agree to in this, that they would be, could be held liable to pay back what they were abated. But we'll see that being an issue in this case. The second is a resolution for each of these to create an economic revitalization area, so that it can be abated. And those are all, you have most of those, I think. And then, next month, we'll have the public hearing again, and actually, then we'll approve the abatement, so we, should we decide to do so.
With a second resolution?
With a second resolution, and signatures on the SB 1 forms and all that good stuff.
Okay. Well, you want to make, somebody make that motion then?
Well, let's do the, you want to do them as a group? You want to do them as groups?
As groups, as groups.
Okay.
So, I will make a motion that we approve the abatement calculation agreements for the
four abatements presented by Scott Pett Products and Rockville Properties LLC, and move forward with the process. Most have been made in second, in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And the second motion I'll make is to approve the resolutions. Laura, do you have resolution numbers available?
Yes, I do. The next resolution, I'm still being 20.
Okay, so, resolution 2020 dash 20, 2020 dash 21, 22, and 23. And these are the resolutions creating the, the economic revitalization area and approving an application for tax abatement, whether it's the real property, personal property, or the vacant building. Four resolutions.
Second. Most have been made in second, approved, the four resolutions, revitalization, in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Okay. Sign these when we're done, I suppose.
We'll sign afterward, because there's several things, so everybody needs to stay until we sign that stuff. It's the way we can move on back. So, Mr. Wildman, thank you for joining us. We appreciate your input.
Thank you for, thank you for your support. I'd like to compliment Cindy, she's been very helpful to us through this process, and so I think, I think she knows, we need to give her some recognition for that.
She's superb, isn't she?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
One question, in recent draft notice, I was going to put in the paper of this next hearing, I had a space to designate these economic revitalization areas as Park County ERA number something, something, and I don't know how you have designated those in the past, but if either Cindy or maybe Bob Clutter could get back to me, I could fill that in, and then we could get that notice over to the paper.
Cindy and I have been working on that this morning here, so we'll have that zipped up here shortly.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you. Yep. I might say that the council attorney, Bob Clutter, had reviewed all these documents, and has worked with Mr. Wildman as well, so they have all been reviewed.
And was intended to be here today, but unable due to quarantine. He's out of quarantine, so he hasn't been there.
Okay. I take care of that. All right. Thank you for coming, Nathan. We appreciate it. We appreciate Scott Pett Products. We're glad that you're here. We're glad you're here, and if we need, if you need anything, like, we're always available, so.
Jim, for a commission, I'd like to add the same thing from the commissioners, too, that this is exactly how this is supposed to work. You've got the public sector, we're going to private sector, redevelopment council. We wouldn't even have access to Cindy's skills, that you guys haven't seen the wisdom of doing what we needed to do to keep her here instead of going someplace else, because she's not, like, we're the only, only game in town for her, so we appreciate you being here. So, this is exactly how it works. We appreciate your, we appreciate the opportunity for more of our people to have real jobs with real pay and real benefits locally, and I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I'll let you go ahead and go, Jim, because I know you have another meeting, so.
I was just going to tell you, we had, everything in the courthouse is working fine. We got all, everything done, sprinkler stuff done, the roof done, we had the paint inspection done, so everything there is appropriate and in its place. The only thing that we've got, we had settlement on, if you remember, 2018, we had a, a lead ran into one of our graders, and that's been litigation now for, well, since then, two years now. So, the mediator and the insurance company agreed to settle into $200,000 level. There was a possibility that we could have won that. If you like, I can share with you the letter from Craig McKeen that we got here. I won't do the whole thing, but this talks how those started. The court ordered a mediation to see where that goes, and it says, while we disagree in lieu, there is no such statutory requirement, and, well, let me just read the whole paragraph, I don't paraphrase it. It says, it's important for you to understand elements of the case that the insurance company had to consider first. The plaintiff had secured the opinions of various experts that the county should have either marked its construction work or used a flagger to alert the driver that the grader was operating in the area. We have graders who are operating everywhere. All counties have graders working everywhere. They don't have flaggers front and back for the, for the operators. We don't have warning signs at every road, at every, every feet up. That's probably something we could have won in court, maybe, but they had a pit, they had experts saying that we should have had that done. While we disagree in lieu, there is no such statutory requirement. The expert's opinion most likely would have been admitted into evidence. Second, the plaintiff's total medical bills for her serious injuries exceed $300,000 with another $100,000 anticipated in future surgery costs. Although the plaintiff generally had a good recovery from her injuries, which is the fractured ribs, fractured sternum, fractured hip, she endured many months of pain and suffering while recovering in the hospital and in Terre Haute rehab. While we believe the county had a good chance of prevailing in front of a jury, the insurance carrier also had to weigh the cost of certain resolution via settlement versus what a verdict likely could have been, and the jury, had the jury concluded that the county was liable, and the verdict of over $500,000 would not have been out of the question if the plaintiff succeeded in persuading the jury both that the county was at fault and the plaintiff was not at fault. If you remember, she was driving on the road, the sun was in her eyes, she came around the corner, the grader was there, she ran into the grader. At the moment, she thought it was her fault, that she felt awful that it happened, she was hurt, but we all know how those things all have different circumstances, all these things involved, so that's why I went to litigation, to mediation. So, it was the jury and mediator's opinion that a $200,000 settlement was fair, and so that's where we are, just so you know.
So, the insurance pays for?
That on the $200,000, but well, of course, our premium is like that, so.
Yeah, the next time, the premium will be, uh.
Yes, yeah.
Imagine that.
Yeah. Just so you know.
Yeah, all right. All right. Thank you.
Health insurance, you know, we settle on that, we had that meeting, we settled on that, so we'll get that.
Yeah, yeah. Lee, I'm going to let you go, since you need to get on the line, so just go ahead.
Do you need Nathan at the December meeting?
No, I don't think so, no.
You said that last time, too.
Yeah, I think. You're good now. Thanks, James, you know? So.
I wanted to ask.
Go ahead, Lee.
So, I'm just really here for some guidance or direction. Next week is Cindy's last week. We do miraculously have a few applications, but of course, right now, Cindy's being paid for 25 hours rather than 15, so I need to know what to tell people when they ask what the hours will be. She's averaging about, I think she said 47 to 50 hours a week, and has been for a while, and we're basically drowning. And of course, the governor made some decisions yesterday, but we have nothing in writing, so our phone's ringing off the hook, wanting to know what folks are supposed to do, and we don't have an answer for them yet. Supposedly, there's $20 million that they're going to share with counties to help them deal with this. I have no idea what that means. We're, if we don't pass 400 a day, it will not, it will be soon, we're at 391.
So, we're in orange, it's a dip phrase in Italian, is that right?
Yeah, yeah. And the way that works, it's, we always think we're going red, but it's some kind of really high math, where it's a running total of unique positivity plus cases. So, we're red for cases, but orange for positivity, and it's not the last seven days, it's some portion of the last two weeks. So, I don't know.
Sorry, I asked.
Yes.
My opinion on the nurse situation is we agreed we funded to pay the nurse for 25 hours a week at the end of the year, which had been 15.
Correct.
I think that's right. We agreed to that. It's not based upon who inhabits that position, it's based upon the position, and at the end of the year, that was to be ended. Now, if there's justification that comes along from that point to continue forward with that, then that'll have to be decided at that point, but my opinion is, is that that's what that position gets paid for.
Okay.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with that, and there may very well be justification as we get further into this, that we need to add hours, and I'm, and I'm fine with adding hours if there's justification to do that.
Well, and I guess, I don't know if you want us to tell the new nurse that not to work, I mean, we work Sunday, we worked yesterday, and we're still, we're still behind. And the state hired that company, but they also sent us an email that said the company is overwhelmed with rising numbers, and that the local health departments need to pick up some of the slack.
Is contact tracing?
Is that really what you're eating up a lot of time with, is the contact tracing?
And calling people, you know, three or four times, especially if we know they have kids in school. We're seeing so much of that, that they send their kids to school and that while they're sick or when they're supposed to be quarantined, so we try to be vigilant about getting those people called first, to try to avoid classes and schools being shut down.
Right.
And I expect it to get worse. I mean, we've seen a big bump from some folks that had Halloween gatherings, and now we've got Thanksgiving and Christmas, and of course, they're saying limit it, you know, limit gatherings. 50 people is a large gathering to me, so, and, and I don't think Justin's going to want to go knock on doors on Thanksgiving to count people, so I, I don't.
I'm fairly certain he's not going to do that.
I guess, really, I'm just looking for him, because it feels like we're drowning, and I don't know.
Great search.
Well, yeah, and you know, the other thing is, the nurse, the position got a pay increase for the end of the, the end of the year, and as far as working over, which was a correct question you were alluding to, that becomes more of a commissioner question, because that deals with the comp time.
Okay.
I certainly, we certainly understand the situation that you're in. There's no question that the health department and the local first responder corps is certainly taxed through all this, so, you know, I can, we just got to justify it like we did the last time, and then work our way forward. So, at this point, the position pays that to the end of the year, and justification carries forward. I, I understand where you might have to go.
So, maybe what we should do then is, with that being said, we come back and, maybe you should come back in December meeting.
Yes.
Go over it again, see how you're getting along, you'll have the new person then on board, I think, with that.
And right now, people that are applying are really looking for part-time, so, you know, we can't force them to do the comp time, so I guess I'm also preparing you that it could get a lot worse. I know two of them have said, well, I thought it was only 15 hours, they've got full-time jobs, they don't want to work more than that.
Well, it certainly could turn into more than, than 15 hours, I mean, depending on what goes on.
Something to think about with that is, I see one, they only want to work, you have two that are decent, and they only want to work 15 hours a week, well, then work them both separately.
Okay, okay.
Might have to create, but why don't you come back in, in December if you can, or contact us if that doesn't work for you, and we'll see about where we're going to go beyond the end of the day, or that'd be good.
Yes, and if you could allocate some money for, like, a masseuse to be on call.
Okay, well, we'll put that on the weekly, so.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you having me, so. Morning, Greg, how are you?
I'm fine.
So, you can come up and introduce yourself, and you have Senator Ford with you. Senator Ford, you come on in, we're not.
We don't play. Masked on or off, or?
Your, your choice.
Thank you.
It's your choice.
That is a very good way of going about it, so thank you very much. My name's Greg Good. My big job, I work for Indiana State University, and I would be remiss if I didn't put in a plug just to say how important this county is on Indiana State. You send a lot of, a lot of students to us, and we're, we're very grateful for that, and we're really proud of our mission, serving West Central Indiana. In my volunteer time, I have the great privilege of serving on the Wabash River Redevelopment Authority, or RDA. RDAs were created years ago through state statute to serve as a conduit or an entity to accept state dollars to member counties for projects that would not necessarily be eligible for things like transportation and infrastructure types of work, things that would, you all would kind of work through, you know, those types of things. But instead, the types of projects that are really fun and enhance your communities, like parks, or natural facilities tied to natural resources, or community centers, those kinds of things that can help enhance your communities in the county and help bring people together. The Wabash River Redevelopment Authority, I think still, holds the record of being the newest RDA in the state of Indiana, and it currently consists of its three original member counties, Knox County, Sullivan County, and Vigo County, and then, as of August, Vermillion County joined. And something that we all have in common is that we're connected by this really incredible natural resource, that's the Wabash River. We formed an RDA out of, in response to an effort that was part of then-Governor Mike Pence's administration called the Regional Cities Initiative, and it was a partnership with the Indiana Economic Development Corporation, where they're trying to, they were trying to seek kind of these strategic partnerships with clusters of counties, not a single individual county, but clusters of counties that agree to work together to go after state funding, really, is what it boils down to, and as I mentioned, it enhances the quality of place. We, really, what it, what it really comes down to is that the RDA is the champion for counties for this money. We are a five-member board, we are by statute cannot increase beyond five members, although I think I'm, I'm going to reach out to the, some folks with the General Assembly and see if there might be an appetite to be able to expand that board. But we currently have, it's a five-member board, and I'll, I'll get to that just here in a minute, but really, our, our, our highest calling, our highest priority is to communicate to Indianapolis to try to bring state dollars, your tax dollars, back to our member counties, and we've, we've been pretty successful in the few years that we've been in existence. If you take a look at what, the page on, on the, the handout, a project called Riverfront Lofts is really a kind of an interesting example. Riverfront Lofts is currently some incredible housing right along the Wabash River. If you take a look at the before it became Riverfront Lofts, it was an abandoned, dilapidated symbol of Terre Haute's past, an old manufacturing plant that was part of the American canning facility, and it then became what was called the Icon Building, and it'd been sitting there empty for about 20 years, and was ready for demol, to be demolished. Well, because of the Regional Cities Initiative and because of our RDA, we were able to raise the profile of that project, and instead of it becoming demolished, we were able to find a third-party private developer that said, hey, that's exactly what we're looking for, and through some state tax credits and some other help that the state was able to provide, we were able to transfer that facility to them for ownership, and, and now it's really an amazing property where you've got people who are living in these very cool loft-style apartments right along the Wabash River. where you've got people who are living in these very cool loft-style apartments right along the Wabash River. A couple of other examples where the RDA was able to go after some state dollars. A, a water park, uh, splash pad, uh, near a community center in Sullivan, uh, Indiana for the kids and families, uh, as well as revitalizing a city park, um, along the Wabash River in the city of Vincennes. And, uh, uh, building a, um, uh, a visitor center at, uh, William Henry Harrison's home, uh, in Vincennes. Uh, Vincennes is also in the early stages of creating a business, um, incubation and innovation type of center where small businesses can go and receive help and a place where, you know, they have a phone and, and a place where they can put their, connect their laptop and, and, uh, and grow their, grow their small businesses. So, those are some examples of some projects that have been funded. And, uh, you know, we're, we're real proud of that. I mentioned that Vermillion County joined, uh, the RDA in 2020. When we first established the RDA with three counties, it was, that was because we were in a hurry to respond to the Regional Cities Initiative. We had about 90 days to put that together. But our, our goal all along was to eventually grow and, and to seek, uh, additional members. And so, as I mentioned, in August, 2020, Vermillion County joined. Uh, I was authorized by the RDA to approach you all and I had the opportunity to speak before your redevelopment commission in October. Uh, this is really important. The, the decision to join the RDA rests with, with all of you. The county council, as a membership to the board presents itself, um, then that decision would be made by your county commissioners to make an appointment, um, to that board. And you, you would have our assurance that if it helps you all for us to put this in a memorandum of understanding that as, uh, the, the next seats of this board become available, that you would have our assurance that you would have the oppor-, that your county commissioners would have the opportunity to make an appointment on, for Park County to serve on that board. And again, I, I'm hopeful that we might have some luck to see if we might be able to expand the board. That again, is currently defined by statute, um, at five. I, I know there's been a lot of kind things already said about Cindy Todd, so I know her head might, might get big here. But you, you've got a, you, you have a real, real superstar and she's a phenomenal, been a phenomenal first point of contact for us. And so I'm really grateful to Cindy and love to also give a shout out to State Senator John Ford, who actually connected me to Cindy. Uh, John, John's been really, really supportive of, of our RDA efforts, really supportive of kinda pushing the IEBC and his members of the General Assembly to, you know, as state dollars become available for these kinds of projects, let's work with RDAs. And, you know, he's also with the West Central Indiana Economic Development District. And as we move forward with the RDA, we wanna make sure that we're in alignment with, with those folks and make sure that we're including all of those priorities, um, that are important to, uh, Park County. So, with that, I'd welcome any questions that you might have and, and I hope ultimately that you'll, you'll say yes, that you, you wanna join, join the RDA.
Well, I think we had a very good meeting and that the, uh, redevelopment commission, we had a lot of questions answered. Some, a few concerns that I personally had about their bonding authority and that sort of thing, once they were able to answer. And it's not really not as a non-issue. Senator Ford was able to explain why that was even in there. And so, uh, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for Park County.
No, I agree. And we went through this in quite deep detail in redevelopment and, uh, answered every question clearly that we brought up. They do not have taxing authority. They do not have budgeting, or a budget. Um, it's, they are simply an advocate organization for projects that you might never, ever be able to get done. That are for, as Greg said, for, uh, quality of place more than anything. Um, so, uh, I think it's a good opportunity for the county to, to get into it. It doesn't, uh, it doesn't cost anything.
If we like to join in with some of our.
One of the questions, I just wanna put this out there and I, I think it was one of the other of you answered this and your answer was, was good, was the question that I asked was, why would we join to get more things for Terre Haute?
Yep.
Now, what was your answer to that?
Sure, absolutely. If, if, my, my answer to that and for all of you who are held accountable by voters is that if you want Terre Haute or Vincennes or Sullivan or, uh, Cayuga or, or Clinton to get your tax dollars, then don't join. If you wanna be a part of something where we can help bring some of your tax dollars back to your communities, the RDA is the mechanism by which to join. And, uh, Terre Haute, uh, is, is only, you know, one, one voice in, in the whole thing. And yeah, while one could argue, oh, you know, Terre Haute's pretty big, but no, it doesn't work that way. This is all about how do we bring more dollars back to the region? And what if, if, I guess what I would envision as the immediate next step, should Park County wanna join, is I would probably, uh, wanna connect directly with Cindy or whomever you would want me to connect with and say, hey, let's start talking about what are some of your key priorities that, hey, if we had a, if we had $500,000, extra money that just came in, say, here you go, Park County, what do you got to spend it on? Maybe kinda put together some of those projects. I know that right now in this COVID environment, uh, folks are saying, well, you know, the, the first streams are tight and there's not gonna be a whole lot of money. Well, that's okay. Let's start developing our plan right now so that when, we know that this economy's gonna come back. As a matter of fact, I would argue it's already coming back in many respects, more in Indiana than a lot of other states that are still in this uber lockdown mode. The economy's gonna come roaring back. State revenues are gonna come roaring back. And the IEDC's gonna come knocking on our door saying, okay, we, we've got some money for you. What do you got for us? And we wanna make sure that we've worked with all of you about what are some of your couple of top priorities that we could put front and center for you.
Senator Ford, welcome. Do you wanna say anything or?
Um, the only thing I'd add, I think Greg covered a lot of it. Um, from a West Central, um, standpoint, you know, we look at this as another tool for our, our member counties and for, uh, folks like Cindy to have in their toolbox. Cause there are credits like the, uh, Riverfront Lofts where they will use a, uh, dino credit, you know, for older industrial buildings. But only RDAs, counties and RDAs can take advantage of it. So, I, I think it's just really gonna provide a lot of tools. From my side job as a state senator, from the state perspective, you know, we are seeing more money flowing from the federal government that they want to go to regional development authorities. So you'll continue to see more money flow through RDAs. And, um, you know, I really think West Central Indiana is, is ripe to get a lot of these dollars. And we just need to grow the RDA so we can take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. So, any questions? Larry?
Yeah, Larry.
Been a lot. Seems like only yesterday we were walking the halls.
You never age, man.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, questions, council members? We do have an ordinance, uh, uh, that's been provided, well, it's been provided by the clutter, our council attorney did. Maybe he actually prepared it, but, uh, using a template. But, uh, we have that in front of you. You'll, uh, call in while we will move towards adopting the ordinance.
No, this will be 24. Is that correct, Madam Attorney? According to your agenda, if that number's right.
Yes, that is correct.
So, this is the ordinance 2020-24 to join the, uh, Wabash River Regional Development Authority. I would, I would move to, uh, adopt this ordinance.
Second. Most of it may have suggested to adopt the ordinance 2020-24 authorizing the, Park County to join in the Wabash River Regional Development Authority. All clear?
Uh, aye.
Ooh. There you are. Heck yeah. Be in contact with Cindy as far as those type of things or if you need to, or how are we going forward from here? Appreciate you coming.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, I guess we're getting down to the department heads, finally. Chris, you wanna go ahead?
I just wanna give you guys a copy of the annual report for the park, some of the projects we completed in there, some of the projects we got for 2021.
You know, I didn't wanna keep that one.
I may wanna keep that one, I guess.
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
Greg, did you get one? You have an actual one packed and you get one.
What we mainly focused on this year was, uh, getting the old shower house remodeled. Um, what we have left to do in there is, uh, the sinks, they're pretty outdated. And we keep having, uh, caps and stuff go in there or they put paper towel and stuff and jams up. So we gotta get some, update those, but it's a, it's a good year, so.
It's all.
Oh, yeah.
Constantly.
Yep. People were a little ornery this year. They broke into the gatehouse, broke into the pop machine, but we got that dealt with, so.
Uh, for all intents and purposes, from everything I heard, Chris, you had quite a successful year and out there all in all.
Yep, we got good staff.
I think you did. Um, you'd be commended for, in this environment and what you went through at the beginning of the season and, and everything, um, I think you're absolutely to be commended for what I would say is a very successful year.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Appreciate it.
Did you wanna talk a little bit just about just the highlights of your projects maybe for '21, just, just the highlights?
I kinda got a, bathroom sink, of course, and the old shower house. Um, the big project for next year will be the, working on the barn. It's pretty rough shape and that's where we keep all of our park equipment. Uh, we need to.
Is that where you keep, is that the, you mean the barn there at the house? Is that, is that the one you refer to?
Yeah.
Oh, you keep the like mowers and?
Mowers, all our tools, everything's in there.
Oh, really?
So, uh, they've been, they've actually already started working on it, my crew, um, they're working on the bottom panels right now, getting those replaced, repainted and everything.
Is it structurally decent or?
Uh, it's pretty rough. We were just gonna put, um, some steel supports on there, um, re-screwed into the boards. It's starting to sag a little bit in the center, so we think we might be able to fix it up. But the door also is gonna be replaced. It's got a huge four-foot hole there so people can just go in. So, we're just putting up a temporary patch just for the winter to keep people out of it.
Right.
You looked into maybe a new building one?
Yeah, yeah. That's what I'm doing this winter, actually.
Maybe, you know, sometimes.
That might be a way to go.
Old barn or something, start a deal with those, that old barn it is. I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know what procedure you'd have to go through to, you'd have to, since it's least of the conservancy, I suppose you'd have to get permission from them to tear it down. I don't know.
I think they actually do that property right there, the house and barn.
Oh, do they give that thing to county?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's good then. I, I wasn't sure about that. So, well, then we wouldn't have to deal with that then. But yeah, you might, rather than maybe putting just a ton of money in that old barn, you might wanna think about.
You still got an old barn.
Oh, yeah, I have, believe me.
I've got that.
I have, I know, yeah.
We had a decent storage facility, maybe even a, a bay where you can get your equipment in, in the winter.
Yeah.
You might wanna think about it rather than put, you know, I understand it's too late now for that, but don't put a ton of money in that old barn where it's maybe, think about it.
Yeah.
Shop building or something, whether it be much more logical.
Yep.
To something like. Anything else or, I don't know, I think that's still your close for the winter now, I see.
Yep, close for the spring or, uh, winter than, um, my crew, their winter riding and everything at the park, so.
There you go.
Super good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Love it out here.
I'd say you do. You can tell by your attitude, you like it.
That's all I have.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Have a good day.
You too.
Yeah. Sheriff, sorry to keep you waiting for so long.
Oh, it was fun. I'm real brief. I don't have much. Um, we billed 188,518 dollars for DOC building, um, up through October. So, at the end of the year, we should have had over 200,000. Um, we billed 15,205 dollars and 50 cents for October housing. Um, one of our reserves struck a deer with a patrol car. It was a reserve car, a Ford Corus. We're just waiting to have an estimate done on it.
Maybe you luck out and it'll be totaled.
I'm kinda guessing. I saw what it's gonna happen, but we'll know here in a couple of days.
The airbag employee and total that out, that's because of the fourth.
Yeah, but, so we, we'll see on that. So, yeah, we're, we're short a car on that.
Thinking he wasn't hurt or anything.
No, no, no. We're short a car on that right now, plus a prior car been totaled. But hopefully we have some extra funds. We might be able to purchase another used car here soon, hopefully. Um, we have six employees out either with COVID or waiting testing or at least on quarantines. So, a lot of that was for some of it, I guess, with two of their kids being out at school and them with them while they're quarantined and then they contracted it, so, but nothing related inside our building or.
So, no inmates? And we've been pretty successful keeping out the uninvited.
Nobody's sick. We tested one or two just for some medical procedures that they had to do that was unrelated, but they came back negative, so. So, been pretty fortunate. We've been good until now. It seems like right now, I think, so. We have 58 in jail right now, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Julie, you have your report, your sunblaze and all the papers.
Um, I'm just gonna kinda hit the highlights from the report. Um, so you can see we had 161 responses for October. That, that's October without the Bridge Festival in this county. That's asinine and ungodly number for us to have. We've already hit our yearly or our annual, I guess, um, average run volume. We hit that at the end of October. So, we still have two months left to go. We are way above on our call volume. Somehow we're managing to keep everything within the budget. Um, it doesn't look like we're gonna go over on anything, so we're managing that. Um, but a large majority of our calls are not going to Union Clinton, where before they were going to Terre Haute and Hendrix. We still are taking patients there, but with all of the hospitals having higher volumes right now, people are finding out that if you go to Clinton or you go to one of the closer facilities, you're getting seen faster. And then if they need to be transferred, they're transferred directly to the department rather than having to go through the ER and wait for hours. So, um, it's worked out really well, the timing of that coming through, that people are willing to go to a closer facility. It's been much easier on us. We have had some instances where people have had to wait for an ambulance a little bit longer. We've had to call in Iliana. We've had to respond to Vermillion County and pick up patients for them, so I know their call volume's up too. Um, it's just because our run volume is so incredibly high. There's nothing we can do about it. We are getting to a point and I'm gonna start looking into it if our volume maintains at the rate that it has been, where we'll start looking at maybe having an on-call crew, um, like we used to do back in the early 2000s. Potentially having an on-call crew ready to respond because that way we're not waiting for another service to come in that's. We, we called Iliana at one point and they said, there's nothing we can do. We don't have any ambulances in our county to help you. So, we wanna avoid that happening. The problem is we're running out of trucks, so if we don't have a truck, it doesn't matter. Um, Med 3 did get taken up to Decatur on Tuesday, I think. Um, so Med 2 had to be repaired. The lighting that we did last year had some kind of glitch in it. We were having disco parties in the back of the ambulance at 2:00 in the morning with nobody touching the ambulance. So, we took it up to Decatur and they fixed that on warranty. Um, there was a plug or something, I don't know, that was in the electronic board that had gone bad. So, they fixed that and fixed the problem that caused it to go bad. And now it's been fine. So, that one came back and the guy actually just rode back with Marty and picked up the truck and drove it up himself. So, we didn't have to make an additional trip, which was nice. So, they're expecting that truck to be done sometime January, the end of January.
This is the remount? This is the remount one?
Yeah, this is the remount. So, the three trucks that we have are in good working condition right now. We've got Med 4 that's brand new, um, except for the box. Med 1 and 2 are doing well. Our run volumes are crazy. Our collections are down a little bit from last year, which seems odd, but we actually have three private insurance companies. Anthem is a big one, um, that are running really far behind right now because of COVID. So, normally we're used to getting checks monthly from Anthem, more than once a month from Anthem. Um, and we haven't seen one for two months. So, we know that when those checks come in, we're gonna have a massive catch-up from them. So, it's not unheard of and it, it's not really bothering. We're only $8,000 behind where we were last year, so it's not a significant number. We're still well above what our average was. Um, and we are seeing the payments from our previous months. previous months being so chaotic with run volume, we are seeing bigger payments from Medicare and Medicaid and places like that that are coming in more than they would have, so that's kind of helping us stay up. We do still have two hundred and sixty-six outstanding accounts, so that's where you see part of that money at, for a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars that we're waiting to come in and we knows going to whenever they get caught up, so we sent fourteen collections accounts out, it's only five thousand nine hundred dollars, last year I was bringing in collections accounts and I would bring in twenty or thirty and we'd have thirty or forty thousand dollars, we're finally getting caught up, we're seeing that most of these are copays and uninsured, so we're getting caught up with that and now we're finally to actually being up to date with all of our litigation and collections, and we are starting to get really good reimbursements from those, so it's been, switching companies has been really good for us, we only have one account that went to litigation and they actually just filed bankruptcy, so, so we got the papers like two days after we sent it, so we're not sure what'll happen with that account. Test numbers have increased locally, as everybody has seen, the positive screens have increased slightly for us going on a call, so the amount of people that we're seeing has increased, actually over the last week, it's increased dramatically, but the actual positive test results are still kind of staying where they have been the whole time, so they're, they're not the whole time, but over the last month and a half, I guess, they're kind of staying average. Our next pre-breakfast is November nineteenth at nine AM, we're still, today we were discussing what we were gonna have, apparently I'm bringing cinnamon rolls, that's the only thing that I got.
Nineteen fifty.
Fifty.
Fifteenth, sorry.
What did Marty do on Sunday off?
He says that he is, but I've told him it doesn't matter, breakfast is not a word detail for him, so he still has to.
He's got to say, he's got to bring the cinnamon rolls.
I, I have to bring the cinnamon rolls, he said.
So Marty.
Nope, that's what I thought. So I do want to give you guys an update on the COVID Task Force side of things, number one, I think that we have managed, the CARES Act part, I think we've managed to get all that stuff done, which Chris can talk about that, one thing that we've been working on with Lydia is trying to get people to come in and help, so we're looking at maybe getting a couple volunteers that are HIPAA compliant volunteers to come in and help with contact tracing, we've had a couple people reach out that are retired nurses and some student nurses and things that are willing to come in, Chris has, he's not in here, he still has the program that we got for the nursing students that we're helping, they still have the office with the phone line and things set up, so we are working on trying to get a couple of people that'll come in and help alleviate some of the stress off the health department, so that we can try to stay caught up, because we know that the state's not really gonna contact trace for our area well. Another thing is, we had a meeting last week with the state health department and the state department of homeland security, so there's two different areas and EMS kind of meets right at the intersection of those two, so we are public health and public safety. We found out that Park County is the only county that does not offer vaccines through their health department, and they're running a new initiative to try to get department of homeland security, the other side, public safety, and involved in that, and really it's just to get vaccinators, so that they have enough vaccinators for flu shots and COVID shots, when we had the meeting, they asked us to run a pilot program that they're doing to do actual vaccines, childhood vaccines for birth to eighteen years old, so because our county doesn't offer that, we actually would receive the vaccine for free from the state, because they allow a certain allotment for every county of childhood vaccines and flu vaccines, and it sets the framework for when the COVID vaccine comes out, the state actually had intended to start receiving that in November, they were told they were going to start receiving the Pfizer allotment in November, politics is in there somewhere, so we're not sure what's gonna happen right now, but we do know, they're providing, the state is going to provide the refrigerator, the freezer, it's going to be ours that we're gonna own, we are allowed to bill per vaccine that we give up to fifteen dollars, so there is money coming back in from that, so now we just have to finish the details of getting everything turned in, so we're gonna start running, I think, in the beginning, just once a month for two hours, we're gonna actually go out into the different communities, into the fire departments and town halls and things and offer childhood and flu vaccines, and that's gonna be a hundred percent ran by the ambulance service, so that's where I'm at right now. I needed at least one more thing on my list of things to do daily, so we just threw that in there.
Number one, don't forget when you do your encumbrances to include the riverboat for that ambulatory amount, since that's not gonna be done till January.
Yes.
So don't forget that, and second.
Send me the number for that, please.
Yes, I can. Second thing would be, don't forget we need to figure out what we're gonna do about that account for the vaccination, that was, and you and I talked about the other night.
I'm still working on, actually I'm waiting on an email back from Debbie, so as soon as I get that back from her that has the list of everything, then I'll be able to work on finalizing all that.
At this point, we're looking at, there's, should be able to, to bill some, so mind of minds here before we go talk to some people that'll settle it, is creating a non-working account of some sort to manage this program.
It's gonna be separate, we can bill it as the ambulance service, but it's gonna be separate than if we bill an insurance company or a patient on the ambulance side, because it's non-transport and it's a totally different type of billing, so we, we want that money to go into a separate account to help fund the program, and the only thing that I'm aware of that we're gonna have to pay for is the man-hours, so, I mean, two hours a month is not, two hours a month for two people is not a lot, but when we get into the COVID vaccine and they really want us to push it, it's gonna be a little bit different.
Right.
Until that's administered.
Okay, thank you. Katie?
We went to IBTR on Jean Hatkey on her exemption appeal and her valuation appeal, we received, we did both of those on July thirty-first, we just received our decision from the IBTR and we won both cases, so that's in our favor. We are still doing reassessment in Monazuma, all is going well, and sales validation in preparation for January ratio studies again, otherwise everything seems to be going pretty well.
Good deal. Cameron, you're our only public, welcome to the council meeting, do you have anything you wish to offer?
Nope, just here to listen and learn.
All right, well, good luck with the learning, but, you know, all right, well, we'll move on to our regular business, we've got approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve the Thursday, October eighth, twenty twenty, and the August twenty-first, and September eighteenth, twenty twenty minutes on.
Most men make exact approval of all the minutes on the fair.
Hi.
Transfers.
I'm just gonna put this in our stack to sign the end, let's sign the end again, let's see, the insurance, we didn't allocate enough for insurance for parking rack for, for the director, and that's my fault, frankly, I come up short because I never accounted for the HSA and I counted for clinic payment and life insurance, so, there's two transfers for, from, that are in category O-one transfers, for those two is the first two on your list, the next one is, is that it would appear that there was needed to be a little bit moved to fielding due to the hundred and eighty dollars to pay out the final deal, operating supplies and parking rack of thousand thirty-five eighty, that will go ground, from ground maintenance to operating supplies, we talked a little bit about the things that he's been doing, travel and training to operating supplies for fifteen thirty-seven, local health trust, clinic supplies to part-time nurse, that's the comp time payment commissioners agreed to, we had intended at one point for that to be billed on CARES Act, as you would recall, but with the CARES Act funding moving to salary reimbursements and that money going back to the general fund, which is a place that we can use it for, for this going forward, we moved back to payment, nurse at local health trust, so we moved that clinic supplies money that we had appropriated that was reimbursed back in the early days of that over to pay that. Public defender board, indigent criminal salaries to criminal despotions, seven hundred dollars, the jail officers, jail part-time cook and sheriff's department, general fund two thousand, cook paid a run out in that line, and then evidently there's extension service traveled office, supplies a thousand dollars.
Okay, any questions about the transfers?
Just move.
Second. Most have been made second to approve, transfers on the fair.
Hi.
Post.
We do not have any additionals on this agenda, but next month there will be several, and that will be for the CARES Act items that were put in to be reimbursed that were taken out when the salary reimbursement process came along, so they had several to the tune of a hundred and seventy or eighty thousand dollars worth of stuff ready to claim, that money is coming back to the general fund, and now it has to be appropriated for them to finish their purchases of the things that they deem necessary, so, we're writing those, actually, most of them are written up, but there'll be a bunch.
Okay, jury pay.
Make motion to pay the jury.
Second.
Motion to pay the second to pay the jury on the fair. Committee reports, redevelopment.
We just had redevelopment meetings.
Spent most of their time going over the tax abatements and the, and the RDA, Mr. Goode was there, so I think you pretty much have the idea on that, fighting is only, not meeting, courthouse security did not meet, I promised the auditor if she could go over her proposal for, scanning the documents and that sort of thing, you have that thing in your pocket in no place.
SBS portals.
I wonder what this SBC portal is, it's a tunnel software for the auditor's office, the software will be used to go paperless, what we're, the main goal here is to get all the transfer books online, once all the, they're going to come in and scan all the transfer books all the way back to the eighteen hundred, once all those transfer books are scanned in and at the running, it will be in the auditor's software, there will be a link on the Park County website that the abstracters can click into, and that, when that link appears on the county website, that link will go into the SBC portal for all the transfer books, we're also, we're looking at going paperless with claims, so then all the claims with, there'll be a portal line that's handled in the auditor's office that each department would go in and fill out their claims, it'd be the same paper form for state core accounts, it's gonna be on there, but it's gonna be paperless, it'll be putting all their claims on this paperless, and then that will be scanned in to the portal and we will be doing the claims paperless, also the deductions, we're looking to have all the deductions go onto a portal software, on the software it will show all the deductions that have, everybody has filed, the public will not be able to view those, but there will be a link on the Park County website that the public will be able to click in and be able to file their deductions, so they wouldn't have to come into the office to do that, they can just file them on the line, and there's a pricing on it for the service to scan it, to scan the portals with all the deeds, not all the deeds, all the transfer books, and then there is a monthly fee to go onto this also.
Where is the monthly, I guess I may be overlooking, where's the monthly fee?
Okay, so the monthly fee is on, it says section eight, proposed portal pricing.
What page?
Should be sheet five. Should be all scanned together.
I'm sure it's in here. It's not in there. What, five fifty a month? Is that right? There you go. To clarify a couple things, the transfer books, of course, obviously are the land record move, or land transfer books that, records that are important for appraisers and so on, as they, they work through and do their, their jobs, the, so access to that, this was all part of the CARES Act process as well, and then the deductions, the auditor and her staff have to go back to that book every time when they're doing settlements to, or doing CNAV and all that business to get the deductions applied correctly, the parcels that they were applied for, so, then online application of that's a benefit, but the real benefit to that is having all them deductions ready and applied, my proposal was that we would fund this out of the flat book with an additional in January, my, my understanding from the auditor is that this will not be billed or be done before January anyway, so there's no reason to do it now and encumber it, so that's what I, what I was thinking about myself.
And on there, we won't be billed all at once, it will be billed as the company is doing it, so there'll be partial allowance.
But what I think we probably need to, to try to decide here is if we're supportive of the process so that we at least have a.
Well, there's no doubt we're paperless is the way to have now, the way to go, I mean, and.
Does that include our meetings?
Yeah, I know, I've got enough, just drowning over here in paper.
I don't remember what paperless or payable text, so we don't have paychecks anymore, and I still get a paycheck, and I put a six stamp on it, so, paperless is kind of a, you know, it sounds good, but do you still have to have a paper backup?
If we did the paychecks through the portal, then the.
No, I mean, on, on this, everybody says paperless, you lose paperless and then you need a hard copy too, well, yeah.
If we went paperless on paychecks, no.
But you did, they're contracted, I still get, still in the mail.
Well, I gotta bring them, see, they have them.
They could provide them, but they don't, I think they have them provided. We can, they can be, I know that process was in, that was in process for them to be mailed to us.
I'm not opposed to this, but I'm saying, no, that's, we use that word paperless for pollution.
Yeah, that's true.
But it's also safe on storage, because the attic is open over, so, I mean, it's the way to go, it's the nice to go, so yeah, I, I'm supportive of it.
I am too.
The flat fund has enough money to handle this without any problem, so.
Absolutely.
It's probably a good use of the money.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's, I'm in favor of it, so.
So I guess.
If they can.
Proceed ahead.
Proceed and we'll do it in January.
Okay, we have one other thing, we need to readopt the salary ordinance, there's an act, or the signal actually discovered an error for us, which was nice of them, so we don't, we do not have to republish this since it was under correctly, it's just we need to, to make the change, but thanks to the signal for.
Yeah, I made, I made three errors in the Iowa department in not transferring the right hourly rate in both places it's listed, and one location of a twenty eighteen budget versus twenty twenty-one, so that error's actually existed now for three years, right? So, they caught that one too, so that was good, but anyway, it seems to be readopted, again, there's not need to be published, I checked this at the board of accounts, they were fine with readopting since we're not at the end of the year yet anyway, and it was published appropriately, so I would move to readopt the salary ordinance twenty twenty eighteen, which now will become twenty eighteen, or twenty twenty eighteen A.
Most would be made second on the fair.
Fine.
Okay, put that in the box for the summer, so nobody leaves until we do the signing, so, anything else? Okay.
No pleasure.
Thank you.